They're agreeing with the Caltrans and their status. They're the one, they are modernized the LOS level of service to calculate the quality of the corridor. It's vehicle miles travel, VMT. Okay? So that's a whole nother, they're kind of going into another era of how they measure traffic. And so this is probably going to be kind of what we'll look at and update.
Mr. Eric. No, Kerry.
No access.
No, Kerry.
I love you, Matthew.
Mike says, Mike though.
I was just gonna say that we've got a resolution that this council adopted eleven years ago that lays out some basic principles. In the absence of that, Elcamino is still gonna be a problem, still the biggest problem we have in this city as far as traffic. That's what we've done a good job, I think, getting those beacons up. We got them, because people were dying, right? I mean, it's a dangerous, unhappy street often, in particular, right after, like, this time of year when you're driving, even though we call it northern south, you're driving right into the morning or your sunset, depending on where you're going. You're clock spots. I wouldn't ride my bicycle, for the, 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 riding my bicycle, God bless you, but I wouldn't ride my bicycle, so I don't, and I live near Elcamino, so I won't do that. But, but my point is, it's gonna be, we need to have some philosophy about how we would like Caltrans, and of course, we don't do a Caltrans develop that corridor. And, and I believe these, these principles are actually reasonable and thoughtful to do it. The absence of them, we need to know what was some articulation, some principles we like to be vetting, because it might be the way, the way it is now is not something that we as a town are, right? I think so, really, it goes through the problem.
Kerry?
I'm gonna echo something that Rick said. Evidence different. And I think that we all wanna see some, some type of proposal into the road here and thinking that there might be an objective that we can actually accomplish. So I think that there's a hybrid version of this that is possible, and that may be something that maybe it is the east side of ECR that we can develop a whole border for the length of Atherton, because we don't have a commercial interest typically for us to be going across the street. We created the hybrid beacon components, so therefore, maybe the philosophy should be to focus on not doing the reduction in the component of traffic to get, to focus on at least a safe route to get people through Atherton on one side of the street or another, just to try to establish one. I think that was a bit mentioned, that with additional outreach and more feedback, might be helpful in making, you know, that ultimate decision. There's a huge funding requirement to this, that, you know.
Okay, so.
No, all, all kind of projects have huge dollar amounts. So I mean, yes.
So it's okay to say that?
Yes, yes. And it's just not something that we should say, oh, we can't, you know, we can't even look at it, because it's gonna cost a lot of money.
I, it's not our money. And it is a huge, to redevelop whatever was made of the ECR for the border, period. I don't think it's gonna be cheap.
Okay, Rick?
I don't know. So, two things. I, I think that the idea of maybe doing something on the east side of Elcamino does make sense, because you do have Spruce Street with sidewalks, almost, you have sidewalks in Elcamino up to Spruce, and then I think there might be a street without a sidewalk, but it's almost the sidewalks from Spruce to downtown Menno Park. And on, on the east side, if there is something done, we do have Boyd and Park. So if we were to connect Watkins to Boyd and Park, we, I mean, that, there, there's some possibility there. I don't know how you do that without taking out a lane of traffic. But I think that if we're gonna do something, it has to be protected so that people that use it are safe, and are not just, a buffer lane doesn't work on Elcamino real. Yesterday, I saw a woman walking her baby in a stroller on Elcamino real, trying to get to Watkins, and it just scared the hell out of me. But I also note that in this interim peninsula bike way, where Atherton's piece of it is very convoluted, because it isn't straight, not one town on the peninsula uses Elcamino real for this bike way. So I think that this is a state highway. It's not safe for pedestrians, and it's not safe for bikeless, bicyclists. And the only way it's going to be is if you protect, if you create a zone that is separated from and protected from the cars. And I think that's a big project. We will not look at that. That's, that's a big project. But I do think it does make sense, maybe, to look at that on the east side. I don't know if that's a complete streets, Grand Boulevard thing. It sounds like it is, would be, if we did the analysis that this is the most that this stretch of road can handle, would fit, and, and we would structure it in some reasonable way that would accommodate multiple modes of transportation. It's satisfied complete streets, but I, I don't really see it being Grand Boulevard parkered. The Grand Boulevard concept was for the entire peninsula, and Atherton's really much different from these other towns.
So my final comments, I think you've got your input.
Fair enough.
Is that obviously we support complete streets. Complete streets does include, include bike lanes and things like that. However, that is a state highway, and so it would need to be a regional solution and/or a state funded solution. I would like to see bike lanes or some sort of methods so we can have tra, improve travel pedestrians and bikes on all of our streets, okay? Because we, our number one goal has always been, since I've been on the council, is a, is a residential and safety, as well as safety of those passing through Atherton. But this is the more complicated thing, which should be put bike lanes on, maybe Elcamino or Road Diet, as Mr. Lauter more could help, there's lots of other things we might consider. So if embracing the, the Grand Boulevard initiative, which I embrace the principles, that doesn't mean that I'm willing to support that the town spend their money to do it. So favoring the back city manager as to how that should be put into a general plan.
So what, what I heard, right, most I heard, I mean, the general plan is, it's not a detail or, it's way up here, it's very broad. It informs the resolution, which is a little more specific, but it's still very applicable, and informs our code, which is much more specific. And we're not designing Elcamino real solutions this evening, and there's a lot of experts that can inform our opinions on that. And any improvement along Elcamino has to have a good lot of issues, which we've all talked about, funding, priority, consistency, design, and political process. So what I heard is, we're, we remain supportive of the Grand Boulevard initiative as the status quo in the general plan, but that means perhaps it still has to be worked out. But expand our involvement, perhaps, in the GBI process, so that we're able to gauge what goes on with that process as it affects us locally. Engage with CAG and Caltrans on the resolution, and how that keeps streets, change that resolution, and engage with neighboring jurisdictions for consistent implementation along Elcamino's jurisdiction. And then also consider beginning the public education process, with opposing provisions about traffic laws, the RCR's solutions could be, and go back and maybe here with additional funding recommendation for that.
Thank you very much. Let's move on. Item number two is the heritage tree, the rewrite, the heritage tree, coordinates, and supporting documentation, and get our final input on a couple of key items. There's been a couple, there's been input from previous council meeting, there's been input from the little group, study group, and those, those were all attached. Get some public input, and hopefully get things cleaned up so that we will then look and approve in a future meeting, the new heritage tree ordinance or revise. So with that, Stephanie, you can take it.
Good, Mayor. So we are going to back for further discussion of the historic tree ordinance. There's been a series of public meetings started back in September 2016, which we had canceled back in March of this year, which was the Ad hoc subcommittee way, with work with staff in all of the requirements of the initiative tonight to open the heritage tree ordinance, as well as the current protection guidelines. I'm going to skip to the main topics that were discussed by the Ad hoc subcommittee, really a little before, if we categorize them, go through each of those, and then I'd like to open up to any specific questions that the council may have. My arborist husband, another, this meeting that's not too intense, we wanna make sure that her comments here are available for women. So the first topic being direction received from the Ad hoc committee regarding heritage trees on neighboring properties, there was discussion that it should be addressed within the ordinance, so some specific provisions have been made and are recommended, specifically there was recommendation now added in that would require detail in a tree protection and preservation plan, that's a requirement for site developments, as well as a written inventory of all trees, to include all heritage trees within fifteen feet of a shared property line. That distance was in professional opinion of our town arborist, and I put in that distance, regardless of species and with size, to be a safe, safety zone, so to speak. And that detail that has been specified in the ordinance includes not only a survey location, size, and trunk, and drip line on that particular tree.
If you, would you take questions as we go through that?
Sure.
Do you want approval on these items?
Yes, there's one specific that would look for.
You want approval? We want our consensus so they can find one. And so if, if, when we're putting one of these things up, the council member says, well, I'd like to provide you some quick input.
So you want, so you want both questions in?
Just ask a question, go ahead, just a question. Why don't I leave questions?
So I have a question on this one. So is there any problem with putting the tree protection around heritage trees?
So the intent is to build those trees so that the measures of the roots that fall onto the subject property would need to be protected. So it's not a requirement that would say parcel A's contractor has to go next door to parcel B and put a maintenance, just the area of the tree that falls within the property development, but make this would be well paid along the way. I think it's asking for trenching, so they're aware, there might be root that's from a neighbor's tree, and so it's just to create that awareness. So roots are shaven, that being.
I read through it quickly, and my recollection was that there was some comment about tree protection on those neighboring trees, and maybe it was just as they come onto the property that's being developed, or the, or the permit is, or the, that makes total sense.
Yeah, I think our thought was not to treat upon the neighbor in any way. In fact, this can all be done, and I ever trespass on any level, no neighbor cooperation is needed at all, but just to make sure they understand what the neighbors have to do.
I did. Is there a notification from the neighbor, because I think, I think that the neighbor would like to know that there's something to do with that, that they can meet if it's on her side, so.
Currently, there's no recommended language that would trigger required public notice, but if that's something the council would direct, you can do a great head of it.
Yeah, I would think that there's a notification in fact, the neighbor should get a notice that, by the way, you've got your protecting protected, attached to that. This seems simple, excuse me. Thanks for that.
Yeah, okay. So this, this is a question. All right.
Can you take on some of this topic?
Kerry, go on.
The second topic had to do with how to address heritage trees that are proposed to be relocated. There's not a lot of these requests, but they do pop up every once in a while, but current town policy is a process of requesting heritage tree removal permit at the planning commission level, simply because in the opinion of our arborist, these types of requests can be very risky in the tree's ability to long-term, long-term sustainability and survival. So the recommended changes with the ordinance is to effectively formalize what is current policy in terms of the process, again, at the planning commission level. It allows for heightened review, specific conditions can be added, as well as details on the relocation of that tree, as well as any associated replanting requirements, should that tree fail in the future, within a reasonable time frame, I mean, like fifty years now.
It exists, it exists for removals, there, there's language for removals, and basically it's just saying, if you want to relocate a heritage tree, it's gonna be treated the same as a removal. Now, you, we can consider the relocation, but it's gonna be treated, you gotta get permits, it's gonna be treated like a removal.
But if it gets removed, it would not have to be replaced by two or three, because it's going in somewhere else. However, I would, things. Yeah, but excuse me, relocate. Because if you remove it, then you have to replace it with two or three trees of different size, but if it's life to life, I think we have to do that one. However, the time period should be very similar to what we put in for these replacement trees. If it's three years, then it's three years. If it's two years, then it's two years, okay?
Two years, three years.
Perhaps for a heritage tree being relocated, the impact, I would ask the arborist, don't you think that that might have longer time, need a longer time to prove that it will make it?
Yeah, so that will be on a specific case by case, and that's why the planning commission will look at the species, how old the tree is, and everything, and then I'll give a recommendation on how many years, I think, for it to fail, based on all that information. So I think it's a case by case, so I don't know, we can just say, oh, in one year it will fail.
And you have that microchip in there now, about case by case, there's, there's this arborist override.
Yeah, there's language that allows the planning commission to include reasonable conditions and then.
But, but there should be a not to exceed, okay? I mean, you can't say, hey, this is a great tree, it's a hundred years, it's gotta live, before we release you, okay?
Is, is there, is there a guide that gives you an estimate based on the variety of tree, that there isn't, it's just.
It's on the moral weapon, the annual transplanting and construction impact, but there's no guide that says, that.
Says, here's the, this will be fine. Can't be a lifetime.
So we could add additional length under the not to exceed.
Yeah.
Not to exceed related clause with fifty, uh, or any of the clause.
Not to exceed by three years or something. I don't understand, I mean, thank you, please. What the city council?
Usually failed within what, a year or six months. I think again, it's a matter of species, and I would, I would fix.
It's, it's, it may need a winter, April.
I'm, I'm, Rick asked for the, the city, but Rick, you, Rick analogizes to treating the same as removing heritage tree.
Yes.
So.
You got there's a process.
Right, but my, my question is, would, would a landowner have the, the option of removing or relocating, and we'd be indifferent, or we, how's that?
Well, it would just be for a tree that is determined to not be dead or dangerous, that wants to be relocated at a heritage tree size. Right now, there's no specific language talks about how the town is to consider those types of requests, so the recommendation is to consider those types of requests as a removal permit at the planning commission level, because it is not dead or dangerous, which is consistent with how things are being done currently.
It's a huge set of guides.
And it's very, they're very fact specific, and so when they consider it, they're very clear about exactly what they intend to do, and those are conditions of the approval. If they apply for one of these, is it a good move over here, and then they changed their mind, wanted to just hang it out, that would not be acceptable.
Right.
Maybe they'd have to come back and work, work again with the arborist, and probably imagine.
I just want my question on, make sure that we're not creating what I'll call the moral passage for it. That, that we're gonna be encouraging somehow, trees are relocated, otherwise wouldn't be relocated, is it? It's a pretty, it's a big deal to go through this stuff.
Yeah, and if I, if you're, I mean, two people have requested it, and I think all in one have gone to planning commission, so it's very minimal, we just run out of language in the word. So with that situation.
Yes.
That's a process. Regentrees?
Regentrees. So there was direction by the council to remove a prior recommendation to add regentrees as protected tree within the buildable area, so that has been removed from the ordinance. Then there was follow-up discussion on how the town could just quantify or assess the impact of such change, and so staff's recommending that to the level that we can keep track of those trees that are removed, to report back to the council in a twelve-month timeframe, and then when the ordinance gets adopted, so you can gauge the implications for such change. The last topic that we wanted to discuss tonight has to do with the requirement, or recommended requirement for either a major bond or security deposit to be submitted for replacement trees. First off, this is an existing regulation for replacement trees that are related to any type of heritage tree violation. There is no requirement to date that would require such a bond or deposit for any heritage tree that gets approved or removed by the planning commission. Recommendation is to then add that, similar to what is about the heritage tree violations. A couple of key points on that. This recommendation is not recommended to be carried to dead or dangerous trees that are approved at the staff level. And really, the intention was to give the town a greater assurance that any replacement trees that were similar to what we're just discussing, approved as part of the condition of approval to remove the tree, will survive and be permitted, or have an incentive to maintain those trees and to find them to begin with. There is a proposed timeframe of one year for when that bond can be released back. Trying to stay internally consistent with the timeframe that the assistant city attorney is dealing with, just um, thinking about. So. Yes.
So has there been thought, looking at past history, of what the additional workload will be, if any, associated with doing that? Because that was my concern, and my comments back was that, you know, this is going to become more problematic than it's worth. There are items in there that say, well, you plant the tree, you plant screening, if it dies, you know, you can come back out and ask them to replant the screening over a period of time. So is this gonna be more of an imposition and additional staff time and coordination?
It will be additional staff time, however, it will be on the project to come back to us within a year, and then I would do a site visit to confirm that the tree is alive and get their, their bond back. We can also do that in ten cases, I can do it in a photograph, where I can see the house and the situation, but yeah, it would be an additional site visit. But that would only be for planning commission items, and, and, and we don't know how many would be once this new ordinance is in place, but right now, we'd get about maybe twenty of those a year, maybe? So that would just be an additional twenty site visits, which, that's the primarily site that is around.
This is only for replacement trees, this is not for screening?
No, I understand, I was using screening as an example. With screening, there is a requirement to do it, replace it if it dies, like, for example, then you're for.
Rick has a question. Let me just clarify, so you said this is about twenty a year, so this is, this is specific to replacement trees where people get a heritage tree removal permit, is that correct?
And those are just for the ones that have been approved at planning commission level, because there are bonds that don't get.
So I, I would just say, from, and this is just off the top of my head, but from an administrative kind of issue, at some point, if they don't come back to seek return of their deposit, the deposit ought to be forwarded, because they don't wanna keep it deposit on books for multiple years.
But it was like, what would they, the building permits or the, or the permits, the fee for disposal and reprocessing of, of destruction debris? We said that over time, that they don't pick it up in a certain amount of time, we sweep it up and we make it ready, and I think that's, you know, it's their responsibility.
For a fifty positive, they don't claim it within a certain period.
Within three years or something like that, yeah.
We can add that certainly.
But I, I don't know what we do, what is our practice now? Do we keep those deposits on books for ten years?
No, usually we do try and contact that, and I believe that is what we did with all of the, the mayor's, then you say that, and.
And we track how much we, that's the, for any of the first.
I'm gonna just stick here, I'm here. I, I think that there, I, I think that there should be a, a drop-in date, and that, because there's gonna be cost to try to recover that, and uncovering any of those costs as far as, you know, back to the town, so we need to spend, spend years tracking somebody to get something, which doesn't make sense to me. There's gotta be a count, and then drop some of the job.
Right, there's thirteen codes, or.
But my.
We're changing the code now, right.
But my real comment was, based on our previous conversation related to two, three years of one of that time determined, that was determined, the language should be consistent with the proposed timeframe of one year or up to three years, based on the discretion of the arborist. So that you can, gives you the flexibility to use it, but they also keep the bond on their, that protection.
One further question on that, deposit, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how much it would.
So usually for planning commission, forty inch box trees are required, and those can range between one thousand to two thousand dollars, so we're talking a private bond that's not, not too high, and so if they had to replace three trees, it could be six thousand dollars.
So if eventually it is swept into the town's general fund, another, probably, within there, the council desires is that it be used for a specific purpose, such as tree.
Come on, we think, why would we write it, why don't we come up with something?
Let's give you the location.
If I could, Sal, you didn't point a segment that applies only to planners that we did, so I'm not sure what you said, but let's play the wish of approval, the rule, right, that. What are the other types of how it is treated?
So for staff level removals, replacement are typically required, that's given destruction and measure ordinance, it's a sign for replacement or required for staff level removals. Most of the time I do require it unless there's space issues, and that's on a, on our system.
Should, should they be treated differently, should they be treated the same?
I think it would be a lot of staff time devoted to checking the maintenance of the replant, a lot of people do come back to me and, and prove to me that they have replanted, and I finally go permit. And those trees are always going to be either technically dead, or they're being moved. So I think there are comments we've got from, I think, Whitmer, and about replacements for staff levels, or I think we're trying to deal in while we need it, in, in that regard, because the trees are dead or dangerous. Most people wanna replace them.
Okay, why don't we take a couple of comments, I know we have a couple people that want to comment on it, to ask that question, so. Is there any public that would like to make a comment?
People can forget that picture.
That's your comment, yeah, comment.
That's our current. All for it. Let's go.
Okay, all right. Any final comments from the council?
Okay, so there, there's, maybe the subcommittee could reconvene with you at some point, I, I've got a couple of comments on the line, so I think you did a really excellent job on the ordinance, it's dramatically improved from where it was, and it really treats well now. I didn't have the time to go through the tree preservation standards, but I, I went through the changes, but I, it looked like there were a lot of changes in terms of what the ref, what the references would be, because the section numbers changed, and. And I suspect that there's some misalignment there. I'm not really sure though, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't able to carefully go through it, but maybe we could just touch base before we finalize. Here's, here's, here's my comment, which I'm not sure where to take this, but I just want to make a comment to the council and you all. So in the policy focus in the staff report, I think it very clearly lays out what we're doing. And it says that it contains policies pertaining specifically heritage trees and proposed development. And then there are three bullet points. There's an open space policy, the tree shall be preserved to the maximum extent feasible. There's another land use, two other land use calls that are stated. I had a resident coming to me in the last three months during this process that raised a real problem to me that I just want to share. And it goes to this issue of, and I'm a strong proponent of preserving trees and really protecting our canopy, which is significant. But he owned a property that's about a 1.2 acre, 1.3 acre property. And he loved oak trees. He planted 50 or 60 oak trees on this property as he owned it. And now, 45 years later, every single one of those trees that he planted is a heritage tree. And he found himself at a home where he had to go to a retirement home. And he had 45 or 43 heritage trees on his property. And when he went to list his property, he was told by the realtors, you can't sell this property because there's too many trees and it's too expensive to remove these trees. And I said to him, you know, two minutes. First of all, much of those trees are in the buildable area. It's really not as big a problem as you're being told. And number two, there are people that love trees. So you might just find somebody who really, and the trees are big and beautiful. But it was a problem and a problem up to the legal issue of we can't do things that disable people from being able to get the just enjoyment of their property. And so it raised a real concern for them. Now, for this guy, it just so happened, he found a buyer that loved trees, so he didn't have to grow them. But he presented an issue that I think is a legitimate issue.
But Bill brought that up. In his comments back to you, when you brought this up last time, was that, Bill said that he has the right to keep in private enjoyment of his property. And if he had plans, he would bring him to the planning commission and say, this is where I'm putting the building, this is the buildable area. And he would have the right to then take those down, possibly paying a fee. And if that was the case, then you need to expand on that in there. But I would think that that's where it is. Now, planning commission decides, you know, based on setbacks and things like that, where can you put your house? And then maybe some discussion on, can you reconfigure this or that? But at the same time, he has the right to enjoy his property.
Sure, we can hear a thought about never wanting to get into a situation where it looks like a taking because our regulations are too strict that somebody can't build. And that's why there's a distinction made between buildable area and everything else. And so we really do have pretty full discretion within the buildable area. The other thing is that at the staff level, when somebody comes, they say, oh, I want to see all these things, how much is dealt with at the staff level? I mean, we're not talking about the things that the planning commission. But at the staff level, when somebody comes in and they're trying to take out some of these heritage trees and they say, we're replanting, they're going to look at how many trees you have on your property. And I can guarantee in that instance, 45 heritage oaks, they're not going to replant more because it's really, they do now. I mean, you need a certain amount of life per tree. And so that's an instance where Sally would say, and I've heard this happen several times, there's already planted trees on property, this is not the area where you need to do that now. And so the way I see it, Cody is already working to never end up in that situation. And our amendments have made it even more clear by expanding sort of criteria to make sure that it's, you are reasonably allowed to use your property.
I think that, I really appreciate that. That was a nice topic.
So if I could ask the city manager and Stephanie, so if I don't have the issue with meeting with Rick and, you know, the subcommittee, I think that's a great idea to go through it one more time. I guess the timing of it and what's your calendar and what's your calendar for getting this done?
The goal is to get this on the December regular agenda for the reception first meeting, which does have a noticing period in advance of that, which means your subcommittee is going to meet me before the end of the month.
Okay. Meetings with the city almost every day. Thanks to George. Okay, so wherever you're down with this. All right, so you have what you need out of that? Okay, so the favorite part of the agenda is.
I want to call attention to our little place, places in there. Everybody take this home, this is compliments of T. Colby, Harold Arbor, and says, thank you for supporting heritage trees in our beautiful color, in handwriting. And tell me what type of oak this is, Nancy.
Valio.
The valio. Is that, everyone get a valio?
I got a thousand.
A million of these in my yard. You betcha.
No, mine are bigger.
Thank you.
All right. So thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Okay, all favor.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the snacks.
Thank you.